Good evening and welcome to the December 2nd, 2013 Regular Board of County Commissioners Meeting. This is the Board's annual organizational meeting and as a result, I'm acting as temporary Chairman while the Board selects a new Chairman or a Chairman for 2014 year. So per general statutes, this is their, their once-a-year organizational meeting and at this time, I will take nominations for the position of Chairman.
I think a motion for Tony Dennis as Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner Shudo for Tony Dennis's Chairman, or any second from Commissioner Donovan. Are there any other nominations at this time? I'll ask for a motion to close the nominations.
Make a motion to close nominations.
Motion by Commissioner Shudo to close the nominations, seconded by Commissioner Donovan. And now I'll ask for a vote on the motion for Commissioner Dennis to be Chairman for the 2014 year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like. And with that, congratulations Commissioner Dennis on being Chairman. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank, thank you Board, I appreciate that, appreciate the, having the confidence in me to do it and I'll be, I'm glad, glad to try it. At this time, I will open the floor up for the election of Vice Chairman.
I have, I think a motion would nominate Commissioner Donovan.
And now seconded. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the nominations.
Salute.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
At this time, I'll ask for a vote on Commissioner Donovan to be Vice Chairman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Congratulations Commissioner. Now we've got, the next thing is the approval of the bonds and I will ask for a motion to approve the following public official bonds. The bond type and I will be right here, is Tax Administrator will be Clinton Swearingen, one hundred thousand, be June 30th expiration, expiration date of fourteen. Finance Officer Toby Henson, one fifty. Register of Deed Suzanne Lauder is fifty and Sheriff Rick Barris is five. And I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Shudo for approval, I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McIntyre. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now I'll open the, the floor up for the appointment to the Boards, but I've got a list here that I have gone over with Commissioner McIntyre who's got a list from us and I'm gonna read them out and make sure that we got this right, that we've talked to sort of back and forth to get these stay the same or about the same. Chairman of EDC will be Lindsay, I'll be the alternate. Member of the Health Board will be Peter. Social Services Board will be Gene, Member of the Library Board will be Gene. Airport Authority, I will be the member and alternate will be Peter. Chairman of the Fire District Commission, I will continue with that. Member of Almo Downtown Development will be Peter. Member of the Senior Services Board will be Josh. Rural Planning Organization will be Lindsay, alternate will be Peter. Member of Stanley Water Authority will be Josh, he will be the member and I will be the alternate. And Member of Central Island Council of Governments will be Lindsay and Gene will be the alternate to that. Have I got that right or there need to be any changes? Anybody wish to be on anything different or change or?
Good thinking.
I'll entertain a motion that this be approved.
Make a motion to approve.
Josh, make the motion.
Yeah.
Commissioner Morton made the motion for approval, I have a second. Seconded by Commissioner Shudo. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Motion carried. Now we will establish the meeting dates for 2014. You got the list before you, are there any changes? We had to reschedule one due to Monday, June the twentieth, January the twentieth being a holiday, Martin Luther King holiday and rescheduled due to one on September the first for the Labor Day, so. Are there any of the rest of them?
Make a motion to accept them as presented.
Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval.
Second.
As presented and seconded by Commissioner Shudo. Are there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. During, this is just an announcement that I have to read. During any regular meeting of the Board of the County Commissioners, in order to act in their capacity as a Board of Governors for the Greater Baden Water and Sewer District or the Piney Point Water District, may at their discretion recess a Commissioner's regular meeting and reconvene as a Board of Governors of either of the above two entities in order to conduct businesses, business matters related to that entity. At this time, I will ask for devotions which is I think by Vice Chairman Donovan. Incase.
During the last week or so, we've celebrated the National Holiday of Thanksgiving and I had heard that George Washington had made a proclamation in seventeen eighty-nine to proclaim this day in our country and I was interested whenever I checked into the proclamation, what he said. These are, these are some of the words that George Washington said as he proclaimed Thanksgiving a holiday. Whereas it is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, to be grateful for His benefits, and humbly to implore His protection and favor. And also that we might then unite in most humbly offering our prayers and supplications to the great Lord and ruler of nations and beseech Him to pardon our national and other transgressions, to enable us all whether in public or private stations to perform our several and relative duties properly and punctually, to render our national government a blessing to all the people by constantly being a government of wise, just, and constitutional laws, discreetly and faithfully executed and obeyed, to protect and guide all sovereigns and nations and to bless them with good governments, peace, and concord, to promote the knowledge and practice of true religion and virtue, and the increase of science among them and us, and generally to grant unto all mankind such a degree of temporal prosperity as He alone knows to be best. Let's pray. Father, we are in this country so grateful and have so much to be grateful for. We thank you for the creators of our country, our forefathers, we recognize the goodness that you have offered us and that we in turn need to share with others. We pray tonight that this Board and this Government will do its very best to provide for the needs of the people and to establish an environment in which they may find peace, prosperity, and joy. We ask now that you bless us, pray these things in the name of the child that's born into Bethlehem and the, the Son of God who died on the cross. We ask these things in His name, amen.
Amen.
Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Are there any changes? We'll be glad to do them. I know of one, I say with not any change, we helped the public hearing on this text overlay last meeting, so we'll just mark that off when we get to it, but it's not really a change, we just don't need to do it again.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion made by Commissioner Shudo for approval, I hear seconded. Seconded by Commissioner Morton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. The first item on the agenda is the presentation of the County Audit for Fiscal Year End June 30th, 2013. Presenter is Kotang Shaw Moses. I hope I got, didn't just kill it. The Audit Manager for Martin Starz and Associates, welcome.
Good evening, thanks for having me here tonight. Thank you Commissioners for allowing us, our firm to serve as your auditors once again. I just wanted to remind you that this presentation is on your fiscal year 2013, year ending June 30th, 2013, and mainly on the General Fund only. Some of the audit highlights, I just wanted to mention and brag a little bit that you guys have a great finance crew in, in the Finance Department. Toby and Melissa and the rest of the Finance Office staff are a real pleasure to work with. They are very knowledgeable and cooperative every time we come out and they make your audit one of the most efficient in our office and we really appreciate that. They give us quick responses every time we ask them, so we appreciate that. For the fiscal year 2013, our firm issued an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. You used to see this as an unqualified opinion and due to standard changes, they have changed the term to unmodified opinion, so really all that means is it's a clean opinion, that's the best opinion we can give on your financial statements. We didn't have any question costs or any findings, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies that we were, that, that we were supposed to report to the Local Government Commission. And this is a snapshot of your General Fund summary, revenues and expenditures. As you can see, the revenues decreased about three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars from prior year and expenditures increased sixty-six thousand over prior year. The biggest decrease in revenues this year was in restricted intergovernmental revenues and this is where all your federal and state grants are lumped in, in the restricted intergovernmental revenues and in the prior year, the county had a larger drawdown of lottery funds and you also had a North Carolina Department of Commerce grant, which was that tax incentive grant for Michelin and because you didn't have that in 2013, it made your revenues look a little bit low, lower than prior year. For expenditures, there was a little bit of an increase and we will see that in a little bit in public safety. So your fund balance, it serves as a measure of the county's financial resources available. If you look at it from a for-profit standpoint, your fund balance is your equity. For fiscal year thirteen going forward, they have changed the equation to assets plus deferred outflows minus liabilities minus deferred inflows equals your fund balance or your net position. And this again, this accounting equation changed due to new standards again this year. So nothing really changes for the county, it's the same concept as before, except now some assets and liabilities have been reclassified as deferred since they are not current available resources. So examples for the county, the county does not have anything currently in the deferred outflows category, but for deferred inflows, some of the stuff you'll see on your financial statements include unavailable revenues for taxes receivable and prepaid taxes. And then we have five different classifications, this is just a review, you saw this last year and the year before with General Funds Fund Balance. There's five classifications, non-spendable, restricted, committed, and assigned and unassigned fund balances. And for fiscal year 2013, you had non-spendable fund balance of sixty-six thousand, restricted fund balance of four point two million, assigned fund balance of three point one million, and unassigned fund balance of eleven million three hundred seventy-eight thousand four hundred and two. Available fund balance as defined by the Local Government Commission is calculated as your total General Fund Fund Balance less any non-spendable fund balance, less your stabilization by state statute and you have that available fund balance. And what the, what the LGC does with this available fund balance is they use it to compare you with other units, your size, and to calculate your fund balance percentages. So what it looks like for Stanley County, your total General Fund Fund Balance is eighteen million seven seventy-one, seven oh two, and then you have non-spendable fund balance and your stabilization by state statute. So if we take that out, you have available fund balance of fourteen million five hundred ninety-eight thousand seven oh four. As compared to prior year's available fund balance, you had an increase of four, four millions, about four point seven million dollars. So all, in all, again, this available fund balance is what you have to appropriate. And that does, that figure that's right there, it does not include any committed, assigned, or unassigned fund balance. Or, I'm sorry, it, it includes all three of those. So if you had already committed or assigned some fund balance, it's also in that fourteen million dollar figure. And then your fund balance percentage as a, your fund balance, available fund balance as a percentage of General Fund expenditures and transfers to other funds, you came in at twenty-seven percent for fiscal year thirteen and you see that as an increase from prior year. I just wanted to mention again, going back to a previous slide, the reason for the available fund balance increase this year is you had a lower stabilization by state statute and some of the items that are included in stabilization by state statute are receivables. So for fiscal year 2013, the Stanley Water and Sewers notes receivable was paid down and therefore you, you'll see your fund balance, available fund balance go up. The LGC recommends eight percent for a month's worth of expenditures, so if you look at this, it means that Stanley County has a little bit over three months' worth of fund So this is where you stand with your fund balance in the General Fund, you have eighteen million seven seventy-one, seven oh two, that's an increase of almost eight hundred eighty-two thousand from prior year. The top three revenues in the General Fund, you'll see adveralorm taxes at fifty-three percent, restricted intergovernmental seventeen percent, sales and services at thirteen percent. So those top three revenues, they total about forty-five million four sixty-three, seven oh three for fiscal year 2013. Other revenues are listed to the left and that makes up about seventeen percent of your General Fund revenues. Adveralorm taxes from prior year to current year increased about three percent. There was a slight increase in net valuation, about fifty-nine million in net valuation, therefore you see a little bit of increase in the tax revenue. Restricted intergovernmental, again, this is where all your federal and state grants are lumped into, so we saw a little bit of decrease and mainly due to those two items I mentioned earlier with a little bit, a lesser drawdown of lottery proceeds in addition to, this year you did not have a North Carolina Department of Commerce tax incentive grant whereas you did last year. And the sales and services decreased about one percent from prior year and one of the areas I saw with sales and services was the home health fees had the largest decrease, so what happened there this year was there were less home visits, so less caseload means less revenue in this area. The top three expenditures in the General Fund include human services, education, and public safety, and the top three functions of expenditures make up seventy-five percent of total General Fund expenditures. So your other expenditures in the twenty-five percent category, that includes general government, transportation, environmental protection, economic and fiscal development, culture and recreation, and debt service. Your total expenditures for 2013 was fifty-three million forty-six thousand three hundred So human services increased by about sixty-five thousand dollars. The largest increase in this function was within the Dental Clinic Department. So we saw increases in salaries and benefits, operating expenditures, and capital outlay from prior year. They were purchasing supplies, educational materials, and, and equipment for the addition of two new examination rooms for their department. And education decreased about one percent. We saw a decrease in public schools expenditure. So again, the county received less lottery proceeds this year due to less drawdowns being available from the state and since there was a decrease in lottery dollars, I just wanted to mention the county had to increase their local contribution toward the school debt in the current year. Public safety increased about four percent. The largest increase was in Emergency Management Department and that's due to capital outlay purchases. This year, they had EMS vehicle purchases that they made in their department. So the enterprise funds, you have a couple of these, we'll go with Greater Baden and Piney Point first. Your debt service in the Greater Baden is about the same, your unrestricted net position for both funds are relatively the same, a little bit of an increase in the Greater Baden and a little bit of a decrease in unrestricted net position in Piney Point. Just to refresh your memory, the unrestricted net position in your enterprise fund is almost like your available fund balance in the General Fund. So this is the portion that you're able to appropriate if, if needed. So your operating revenues and operating expenses, your revenues decreased from prior year a little bit in both funds, your operating expenses increased a little bit in both funds as well, and then you ended up with operating loss in both funds, the Greater Baden was two hundred eighty-nine thousand, Piney Point is thirty-two thousand. And I just want to mention, these are full accrual numbers, so if you're looking at the operating expense numbers, you'll see that depreciation is included in those numbers. So if we were to take depreciation out from your operating expenses in 2013, Greater Baden would probably have a, or Greater Baden would have an operating income of sixty-eight thousand five seventy-seven, Piney Point would have operating income of two thousand fifty-three. And then your other two enterprise funds, utility fund in the airport, required debt service is about the same, so it's consistent, your unrestricted net position decreased a little bit in the, in the utility fund and increased from prior year for the airport fund. Same thing here with the operating expenses, these include depreciation, so if you took out depreciation, your, your utility fund, you would have an operating loss of four hundred fifty-six thousand seven eighty-eight and the airport would have an operating loss of three hundred twenty thousand one sixty-eight. Just want to mention, the one, the one enterprise fund that had the largest increase in expenditures was the utility fund this year and they had some increase in distribution and maintenance expense because of water purchases being increased due to repairs on Carpenter Road and some other small repairs and maintenance projects that came up. And then also the utility fund started paying on the implementation of new software, about fifty thousand dollars, which Toby had mentioned that that's a one-time expense for them. And I know, I'm sorry, I went through these pretty quickly, but if anybody has any questions at this time, I can take some questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I'd just like to say thank you, we're dog well done and those compliments that you pay to our finance.
I look forward every year to coming out here, I do.
Thank you for that.
Okay, well, thank you for having me and if you guys, if you should have a question later on, Toby has my contact information, you're more than welcome to call me or you can contact Toby and he and I can get together on other questions that you may have. All right, thank you.
I will sort of echo what Commissioner McIntyre said, I want to thank Toby and I see Melissa sitting back there, they work hard back and I know Toby does and Melissa works part of the time anyway, but she, they do do a good job and I'm right proud of our finance department. Thank y'all very much for the job you do, good job you do. Next item on the agenda is planning and zoning, the presenter is Michael Sandy.
Thank you Chairman Dennis. First item we have tonight is a continuation of a tax amendment we had before you, believe in the month of October. Board Director, Staff, we go back and look at a few things on the proposed amendment and we did, we looked at some other jurisdictions, out of state in addition to the ones that are local. We did make the suggestion that we made one, one change. It's before you, it's under Section six eighteen, point two A. It will read, "A minor subdivision, a minor SEPGS shall include any privately solar, used solar system that generates up to two times the amount of power used on the same property over course of one year." That is, it previously read equal to, with just one times, the amount of power that's generated on that site or used on that site for one year. That's the change that we're suggesting this, for this tax amendment.
Michael, I appreciate you checking into this and following up. Do you have any idea about what, what anybody currently is generating and how this number compares to that? Anybody who currently is generating power in the county?
Yeah, we do have a number of people who are, you know, whether private business or residential structures, unless we contacted them specifically, the power company doesn't share that kind of information, it's kind of proprietary, but the general usage usually uses, people on a residential level use more power than what they're able to generate on a typical scale. I know there's some exceptions to that, but for the general rule, they, they don't typically generate more than what they use in a month's period.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions with Michael? What pleasure to Board. Motion made by Commissioner, Vice Chairman Donovan for approval, do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Shudo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you Mr. Chair.
You're still up.
Next item is ZA thirteen dash oh nine, it's a rezoning request from RATO, Tower Overlay, American Towers, request a portion of a seventy-eight point seven acre tract, it's record number seven three two three owned by Rita, by Rita, Rita, Karen, and Estridge to erect a one hundred ninety-foot monopole tower on the property. It's located at two four seven three three Ridgecrest Road, that is approximately thirteen hundred feet northwest of the center section of Millimport Road. The rezoning area would be a hundred by hundred portion of the property and under Section six fourteen, the Stanley County Zoning Ordinance, approve of this rezoning and issuance of a telecommunications tower permit would allow the applicant to erect a telecommunications tower to a height of a hundred ninety-five feet. Staff has reviewed the application, appears to meet the subjective requirements of the ordinance. No other towers are in the immediate search area of this site, so co-location was not an option. Propagation study was submitted by the applicant for the tower location shows with the direction of the tower, the area would be adequately served. The applicant has notified the property in writing within thirty, three hundred feet of this tower location and the adjoining property owners have received notice in accordance with state law. The applicant has documentation that the proposed tower location will not injure the value of the properties adjoining this site. Section six fourteen, point four of the zoning ordinance states that the following factors may be used in it to evaluate a tower for aesthetic reasons. One is to protect the view in scenic areas, unique natural features, scenic roadways, to protect the concentration of towers in one specific area. Three, the height, design, placement, and other characteristics of the tower can be modified to have a less intrusive visual impact on the county. This site is approximately three hundred twenty-five feet from the center line of Ridgecrest Road in an open area and should not be clearly visible from the highway. This site appears to be an average site for a monopole tower. Staff is recommending the following conditions for approval. One, that public safety, which includes city, state, and county, shall be permitted to co-locate on this tower at no cost. Two, is a zoning permit shall be obtained within six months from the date of the Board of Commissioners approval to rezon the property and a tower shall be completed and a certificate of occupancy issued and obtained within one year of the zoning permit. The planning board is forwarding this rec, this recommendation with a favorable approval, and notes that it is in accordance with two thousand ten land use plan. Be glad to answer any questions.
At this time, I'll have the public hearing, and I'll tear the public hearing open now. Anyone like to speak for or against? Come forward to state your name.
Good evening. Brian Pierce with Nexon Pro. Good to see you again. As Michael's just gone through, the site is, the proposed tower is a hundred ninety-five foot monopole tower on the site at two four seven three three Ridgecrest Road in Locust. I'm not going to go through the, I'll just flash you the slides. We saw these last month about the, the use of, or the need for better cell coverage with the increase of data use. So I'm just going to skip down to the slide showing the site. Here's an aerial of the site. You'll see the, the purple marker where it is. This is just, just the map view of it. You'll see, this is from your GIS maps. The, the tax partial is actually, I think, one and two. The tower will go on the side of the road that's two, which is colored in blue, or outlined in blue. This is an aerial photo from the study that we provided that shows where the tower will be located. This is a view of the site from the north. View of the site from the south. View of the site from the east. And view of the site from the west. Here's a view from the site to the north. So you see it's all wooded. That's to the south. That's to the east. And that's to the west. Here, this is, these are the propagation maps. You'll see zero four six five six right in the middle where you see just the blue coverage. With the, this is what it, the coverage that's currently there. You see now, this is the coverage that will be there once the tower's constructed. You've got the red, a big swath of the red, big swath of the yellow. Those are the ones you want, because that'll get you inside buildings. This is just the site plan showing all, all setbacks are met. This is a close-up of the site plan showing the, the ring around it is the fall zone of the tower. Again, just another photo of the site plan. Here, this is, shows just the interior of the leased area, which will be the compound for the tower. This shows the tower, hundred ninety-five foot monopole. You'll see the area for three future carriers, along with the AT&T antenna that will go on upon construction. And this is a copy of the co-location letter that was submitted. I'm happy to answer any questions that you've got. I think this is a good site. I've, again, sent letters to all the neighboring landowners. Did not get, I got a couple calls, nothing more than just informative questions, no complaints that I heard.
Anyone have any questions over for you? Do you have, you have, I don't have it.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak for or against? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure to board?
I make a motion we approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Ashudo for approval. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Morton. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Motion carried. Okay, next item on the agenda is the board appointments. Board of Equalization and Review, presenter will be Clinton Swearingen.
Good afternoon, gentlemen and ladies. Glad to be here tonight. Glad that you're having me. Simple matter tonight is requested that the Board of Commissioners reappoint three members whose terms are expiring on the Board of Equalization and Review. This board is the board that meets and solves discrepancies between the tax office and the public. Have a very important job, and I've always done a very good job in the eleven years that I've dealt with them. But three members' terms are expiring December thirty-first of this year. All three of those members are eligible to serve again, another four-year term, and they are willing to do so. Those members are Sammy E. Estridge Junior, Jerry Almond, Richard S. Cosgrove Junior. Mr. Cosgrove and Mr. Estridge both served during our last revaluation cycle of two thousand thirteen, and were very dependable and did a good job of dealing with the whole situation. Mr. Almond has yet to hear any cases. He actually got appointed to serve out Martha Cranford's term. She resigned. But revaluation went so smoothly that we haven't had any appeals or any personal property appeals to hear. So he's still, even though he was on the board for six months, we never met. So he, her term that he was fulfilling expires June, December of this year as well. And he would also express his wishes to serve again. It's also requested that the board appoint Sammy E. Estridge Junior as chairman of the Board of Equalization and Review. State statute one oh five three twenty-two A states that the Board of Commissioners appoint the chairman, and then they'll vote for their vice chairman. Like I say, Sammy was the chairman last year. He did a great job. So that's my request tonight, is that you reappoint these three members to four-year terms, expiring December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, and that Sammy Estridge Junior be appointed chairman.
Anyone on the board have any questions? What's the pleasure to board? Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Vice Chairman Donovan.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to do two on this, or just one for, three board members and for Mr. Estridge to be chairman? Just one motion be okay?
Yeah, should be.
Okay, all right. I include that in the motion.
As long as it's included.
Yeah, that's what I intended anyway. That's what I took it for. Any discussion? Sammy, I want to say thank you for willing to serve, and it's, appreciate the good job you do. What's the, what's? All in favor say aye. Motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, next item was the Stanley County Water and Sewer Authority. Presenter is Donna Davis.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to present this item to you this evening. I am here at this time asking you to reappoint a member of the Board of Directors for the Stanley Water and Sewer Authority. The three-year term of Mr. Garrett Smith is ending as of January two thousand fourteen. And Mr. Smith has faithfully served over the past three years. He's indicated his willingness to serve another term, and I think he even made contact with one or more of the board members, the commissioners, excuse me, to let, to let you all know that he is willing to continue to serve. And at this time, I would ask that you reappoint Mr. Garrett Smith for a three-year term to the Board of Directors for the Stanley Water and Sewer Authority.
Anyone have any questions, Ms. Davis? What's the pleasure to board? Motion made by Commissioner Morton for approval. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner McIntyre. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item is the Library Board of Trustees. You gonna do that, Jean? Melanie's gonna do it. Presenter is Melanie Hollis.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. And Jean, if you want to do it, that's fine. I'm just here this evening to ask for you to appoint Stephanie Almond to the Library Board of Trustees to fill the expired term of Wade McSwain. We did have two applicants for the open position, and I do want to thank Commissioner Ashudo for all your hard work going out and finding people willing to serve for us. Really appreciate that. We did, I do recommend Stephanie, Ms. Almond, because she is from New London. We don't have any representation on our board from that area, and she also works for the county schools, and you can never have too many contacts in our local school system.
Anyone have any questions of Melanie? What's the pleasure to board?
Make a motion to accept.
Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Morton. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Just want to thank Mr. Bell for putting his application in for that. I mean, he's ran for city council in Alamo, wants to get more involved in the community. He had a wonderful resume. I think this was a blessing, because he had two very good people going for this spot. I do appreciate, one thing, y'all, because we had talked about all year, we've been trying to find different people in different parts of Stanley County to serve on boards. We tried to see where some areas are weaker than others with, with representation. So we appreciate y'all looking at one of the things is where somebody lives. That, that helps give representation across the county.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And Mr. Dennis, I would just add to Mr. Bell. Thank you. We, we've lots of times asked for folks to apply. So don't mean that this, that we're not interested in you serving. We appreciate, and we hope you'll, you'll apply for some other things as well.
Next item on the agenda is the mandatory code of ethics. Presenter is Andy Lucas, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Each year, per North Carolina General Statute, the board must reaffirm their code of ethics. And so you have it in your packet for your, for your review, and I would just ask the board consider reaffirming that for two thousand fourteen. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
What's, anybody got any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion or whatever.
Chairman, I will make a motion to approve the attached code of ethics to ensure compliance within CGS one sixty A eighty-six.
Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Morton. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I, it's the regular meeting of, of the eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, and the Finance Committee requests to accept the monthly financial statement. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion made by Commissioner Morton, seconded by Commissioner Ashudo. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Motion carried. At this time, we have public comment. Anyone like to come forward and speak to the board? Seeing none, I'll start down here with Vice Chairman Donovan.
No comment tonight.
Commissioner Morton?
No comment.
Commissioner McIntyre?
No comment.
Commissioner Ashudo?
Of course, I got a couple. Anyway, just wanted, a couple things just wanted to mention real quick is, one is, back in the summertime when we had that microburst, I mean, communications was pretty much out in Stanley County. I mean, you didn't have telephone lines, cable lines were down, and people communicated through cell phones and Facebook internet, you know, with the thing. So I talked to Mr. Lucas, and he put together the Stanley County Emergency Management Facebook page. And at the time, we had like two hundred forty-six, no, two ninety-six likes on the Stanley County Emergency Management Facebook page. And then with the storm that never quite came through, but our first looked like it was a pretty brutal storm coming through. They, you know, they post good weather updates when there's a storm coming through. So, you know, we kind of pushed it to try to get more likes to it, and we got like eight hundred and, I think, eight hundred sixty-four likes, or eight hundred forty-six likes right now. And I just encourage, you know, there's got to be tens of thousands of people in Stanley County that are on Facebook, that we get the word out and get people to like this page, because this, it's, Facebook is reality, one of the first venues for people to get news these days. It's easy for them to share around, so, you know, I, I recommend to department heads and stuff like that, to just recommend to your staff to like the Stanley County Emergency Management Facebook page, and appreciate Mr. Lucas for putting that together, and I think Brian, who runs that is?
Brian actually runs the emergency management, and he'll send information, and I've, I've been posting it to the, to the site.
And secondly, I had, since the last meeting, I had, you know, I do my Stanley County government workdays. I work with facility managements with Jerry Morton. That dude stays busy. He doesn't stop like all day. And I tell you what, we started the day, he said, be here a quarter till seven. I'm like, okay. So we, we started off, went to preform, the environmental board met at preform lines, and they did a tour of that. And that's one of those gems of Stanley County. They employ a hundred and fifty people out there, and they, they're getting the solar paneling and stuff like that. So that was a pretty, a pretty good tour. And then he sent me out to the airport and dropped me off one of those hangars, and we, I helped the guys make a, what were they making, a work? Kind of like a work area for some of the maintenance workers out there. They're using some empty space out there. Then he runs around, like how Jerry, he runs around, like evaluates things, you know, and he, he does a great jobs. They have a call, we went to the health department, we went to the jailhouse. And over at the, at the jail, there's a, a food heater, I guess where they put the food in to keep it heated to bring it out to the prisoners. And there was a note on there that it was bad, and it wasn't working. So I don't know how long it took him to call them up, so finally, they called him up, and he came out there. And all it was, it said, man, this thing doesn't work. All he did was plugged it into another outlet, and it worked. So, you know, that's, doing stuff like that saves money by getting this, you know, someone out there service call to come and fit it. And finally, they gave me a post hole digger, and we put a sign out on the highway on Dorothy Boulevard. And the interesting there, if y'all know where Dorothy Boulevard is, or Dorothy Lane, it's like a circular driveway. And they only had the, the sign out on one end of it, so he's putting the sign on the other end of it. And the guy that lived in between has a driveway, and he came over and thanked us, because evidently, people thought his driveway was Dorothy Lane, and they've been driving through his driveway to get the houses at the back of his house, so. I still tell you that the day I worked hardest was at the Stanley County Library, West Stanley Library, man. I tell you what, the most thankless job in Stanley County is reshelving books, because once you get it done, people bring more in for you to put back up on the shelf.
That's all I got. Enjoyed your days at work, then, are you? Ms. Jenny?
Comments, sir? Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
No comment. Thank you.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to recess this meeting, to go into close, and go in closed session to discuss real estate transactions in accordance with GS one forty-three dash three eighteen, period eleven, little a parentheses, five parentheses. The owner of the real estate we're going to talk about is Bill Lilly. It's on Lefler Road, and it's for the emergency tower we're talking about putting on.
I make a motion we recess.
All in, had a motion made by Commissioner Ashudo, seconded by Commissioner McIntyre. All in favor say aye. Motion carried. We're in closed session.